Work on management.
Yeah, yeah.
That's been way too long to write.
If anybody has something to say that's not on the agenda.
That's.
That's.
But then when you bring it up there, do you actually discuss it with that project?
Public comment is strictly comment.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, how are you? Man, you were here on time, Jason. Pick one you'd be on. Nothing left to argue on. I was thinking, I never think that, I was like, I didn't think you were on time. This is what I'm getting at.
Late form time.
Sorry, here you go.
All right, let's get her started. Call it at five o'clock. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Approval of minutes.
They look good to me, to be a chance to get in.
I looked at them earlier today.
I did too. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting, January. Hi, Secretary.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Expenditures.
I make a motion to approve expenditures, payroll in thirty-eight thousand nine hundred thirty-one dollars and seven cents, claims in nineteen thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars and thirty-eight cents, and activity dollars for eleven thousand ninety dollars and sixty-two cents. Hi, Secretary.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Vote presentations, nothing. Communication principal report.
Good evening, everyone. So lots of things to share tonight. Um, this upcoming Friday, we have a teacher professional day, P I R day, and we will be doing CPR first aid training with all the staff. Um, this is actually being paid for from the grant that I received, um, from the J N S Heeman Foundation. Uh, we're also having a discovery education training for that and having a speaker come in to show, um, the lessons and things that are available, uh, through that program that we're actually getting, uh, free.
Is that for new curriculum?
Um, it's not curriculum, it's supplemental things, um, that can supplement like social studies and science and whatnot. So it's kind of a database of different lessons and videos and things like that.
When do, do you purchase, um, a curriculum yearly?
No.
You don't?
Um, so like textbooks and whatnot, we go through a rotation of reviewing them. Um, but, uh, no district in Montana could afford to buy like full new textbooks to go with the curriculum. Um, we're part of a co-op that reviews the curriculum standards on a regular basis. I believe about every three years, the curriculum co-op reviews those. And the standards really are the curriculum, but the textbooks and things, the materials that go with it. Um, we're hoping to look for new E L A materials, but a lot of that's just based upon funding.
And so then when, so last year, I think there was some, some, some curriculum, I'm not sure what it was, but when that curriculum does come to, when you do get new curriculum, who decides that?
Um, so that is a review processing committees with teachers and then we'll provide, get public input.
So the teachers get it and then it comes to us, right? Does it come to us for the final, right?
For the purchasing, yes.
That's, that was my, okay, that's, for the purchasing. But we don't see it unless we come and participate in whatever the.
That's the usual.
Okay.
But it's always available for people to come and get them.
Come and look at whenever, okay. I was just wondering if there was a timeframe or how that worked. Okay. Being that we were on a curriculum committee before in the past for this school, I can't remember which, what's the curriculum word, but they did have a curriculum committee that we were on. And, you know, got a chance to discuss what that stuff was. I was just wondering if that happens still. That's how.
We're pretty small, so the committee really is.
Well, it was here at this school when it was probably smaller than it is now, but.
Okay.
Yeah. I was just wondering if that was still the way that happened or it sounds like you've got, there's some process before it gets to us.
Yes.
Okay. So when it gets to us, it's basically just to approve the money, the financial piece.
Um, and the curriculum itself.
Oh, and the curriculum itself, okay, okay, cool. That was a, I'm sorry, did you interrupt?
No, you're just fine. Questions are great. Um, we went to the Grays hockey scrimmage, um, back on January tenth, that was fantastic. Um, a few other schools went, Hellgate Elementary, Target Range, and us. Um, so that was lots of fun at the ice rink. Uh, third through fifth grade went to the Missoula Symphony, uh, this last month. Uh, upcoming, we have some trips, uh, planned. We are doing ski trips for grades two through eight on February twenty-second and twenty-ninth. And we are going, uh, up to Low Low Pass, uh, to do a snow day on February twenty-third. So lots of fun things planned in the snow this month.
Why did they quit doing the first graders?
Um, so that is the companies themselves. Um, they say they can't staff younger kids. And I called around, I called like Discovery and whatnot, it's the same. Yeah, they're all like everyone since COVID, there's staffing problems. And they say the amount of staff that it takes to have younger kids. I just, they can't staff it, so. Cause I asked that same question and like, can we not bring younger kids in my life?
Cause it used to be like, they want to say the first year was kindergarten and last year bumped up to first grade through eighth grade.
Oh, years ago, I remember taking kindergarteners and even preschoolers up to Los Trillo and we had a ball.
We used to ski off the roof and do flips and stuff, right? The kids did, but we didn't.
So, yeah.
I want to see you sign up to the chaperone.
It wasn't all, no, I know where.
But that's why. Uh, we have an upcoming choir festival, March first. Uh, we're hoping to send, uh, most of the middle schoolers, hopefully all of them too. Um, want to tell you a little bit about, we have monthly, um, drawings. This is where we, uh, have wildcat bucks that students earn for following school expectations. And each month we have a drawing and then each semester we have a drawing. We recently had one and a student, uh, was a lucky semester winner and got a Kindle fire. And then the monthly winners got, um, snow tubes to take in the snow. Um, so that's part of our M B I program. Uh, and then students of the month, um, get to have lunch with me. If I am lunch, uh, and they earn that by following expectations and being nominated by their teacher.
Step boy, he came home, was telling us, no, we, we ain't going off your word until we hear them about it. He's like, you don't have to give me the lunch this day, we're like, no, wait.
Well, hopefully he gave you the certificate. Yes, I let people know when it's the lunch, it's not usually the next day. Um, one thing that I'm working on, and I've, uh, done this past schools and I'm on the board for the county quiz bowl. So I'm hoping to have a quiz bowl team, uh, and take students to the county quiz bowl. Uh, we have that in Missoula each year in May. Um, so I'm trying to get kids interested in that, uh, with, um, trivia. Uh, and that actually happens in high school too. Uh, and actually there's a state competition and a national competition, kind of like the spelling bee. So I'm trying to get some interest for that and take some kids to the county competition. Um, also a great organization that Woodman's been involved in and I've been involved in for a long time is Special Olympics. And our middle schoolers, uh, have been helping with that and volunteering, uh, for many years here. Uh, and the polar plunge to raise money for Special Olympics is coming up February twenty-fourth in Missoula. The people are going to jump in.
How's there gonna be a polar plunge? It's fifty degrees out.
They may have to make ice and dump it in.
They sell giant bags of ice that you can buy and you can go up and dump it in with poles.
With this heat, people may have to buy a lot.
Wow. And that's to raise money for the school?
Uh, for Special Olympics.
For Special Olympics, okay.
Which is something that's a wonderful opportunity for, uh, students with special needs. Um, this year, uh, we again are going to have a yearbook. Uh, and I've been working with middle school students on that. We have a new software that we're designing the yearbook in and I've been working with the middle schoolers, uh, to do that. And each middle schooler has a few pages that they're going to be designing and making. And then, um, our school photographer is actually, uh, going to publish it. So it'll be perfectionally done by the photographer and printed, um, at a private company or whatnot. However, wherever she prints her school pictures, we'll be printing the, uh, school yearbook. But the students are going to be designing the pages, inserting the pictures, the background, all that, uh, on the software. So they're learning that software.
Is there really a school yearbook? Yeah, it's every year.
Every year.
Every year, that's what I thought there was.
Yeah, there's a whole shelf going way back.
Yeah, that's what I thought there was.
Yeah. So the only difference is, uh, we're going a little bit more computerized, uh, and having it, uh, published by, um, a publisher that's gonna do a professional.
What's the goal for the, um, donations going this year?
Um, so I've told, uh, each student that they can get one sponsor. So they're gonna start reaching out to next month and a half or so. Um, there's still, there was a little bit of money left from last year, so we're sitting in a pretty good place this year. Um, I've talked a lot about the grant that we got, the thirty-five thousand dollars from the J N S Heeman Foundation. And I just wanted to share, um, the stuff for that is starting to come in. Um, some of the stuff that we got was science materials, like this is a digital microscope, uh, compact scale. We got a lot of, uh, different posters and whatnot. Um, so lots of different things are coming in from that, so that's fantastic. Uh, and all of you probably saw that we did a vote for the playground that I sent to parents as well as students and staff. Um, and the results are in, I closed the, the voting today. And the winner is the blue playground, uh, and with the monkey bars and the slides, so.
Well, it makes sense, the school colors are blue.
Yep, does make sense. So that option is the winner and I've got that ordered and hopefully will be coming by the end of the year. Uh, and then our company will be installing that as well as removing, uh, the old bars and taking that out, so. That's all written.
And tether ball at the same time?
Yeah, so they're gonna install two tether ball fields as well. Yeah. Done deal there, so that's fantastic. Um, so that is the principal's report. Moving into operations report. Uh, we did have some work done on one of the heaters, uh, and it is operating and making heat, but it's still having some difficulties, so what I'm doing now. Yeah, I don't wanna name it, the same one. Is I'm having companies out to give quotes for replacement. Um, actually, when I talk to them, the year on those heaters nineteen, is nineteen ninety-one. And they have an expected life of eighteen years, so they're way past their lifetime. Um, so one of the things that I'll bring to you guys is quotes from different companies. I'm trying, uh, to get a few different companies.
We still have, um, in the building reserve fund for this year, let's see, nine, ten thousand dollars, who's still sitting there? We do, we do. Uh, I was looking at that today, um, so, yeah, we'll be okay.
And then it'll reset, I've actually talked to the companies of not doing the work till like June. So we can use the new funding as well. Um, and it's really going to be a choice of.
When they come out, would be worth having them, like give a bid for the two that are in this building. Get these two knocked out and another year with the other ones that are older.
Yeah, so.
Get like a bundle deal on two of them.
They, they will. So the company that's come out is the Comfort Systems, Temprate. They've already come out and they've given different options. If we want to replace both the two, if we want to go with a heat pump, if we want to just get an electric forced air. So all the companies I'm talking to are gonna give you options. And then you can look at prices and how much do you want to, to bite off in one year? And how much do you wanna spend? There, there's a lot of options out there now. Uh, also I talked with them, like redoing the duct right now. The duct work goes underneath the building, but they could actually do it, the attic space is pretty big and run it through and have maybe some more vents, cause we're pretty limited on venting in this building right now. So I'm gonna give you lots of options to, to decide, um, for that. But, um, I definitely recommend at the very least that we replace that one heater. It just, something is wrong. Um, along that lines is I'm continuing to work on minor repairs for the facility. Uh, we had a contractor out that did some minor repairs about a month ago. Um, and I'm having, uh, them come back out again, probably next month. Um, we have some windows that are broken, we've got a lot of internal doors, um, that the doorknobs need replaced. Um, just several things to keep our facility, you know, running smoothly and keep on top of this.
The doorknob stuff, isn't that something like Hunter can do in house?
So that's really just custodial. Uh, which is a deeper conversation about the contract for custodial really, except for some are just as mostly custodial. And not maintenance, in summary, the part of the contract is some maintenance. Um, yeah, just trying to keep on top of that. That's what I've got for operations, any questions? Okay. I'll move on to P T O. So we had a meeting, um, right before this meeting. Um, we didn't have as big a turnout, uh, this week, we just had two parents that came. Um, and I went through the different options, I talked last month that working with our legal counsel, that, um, they have advised the district that the monies for a P T O or a P T A or any type of organization like that be separate and not be part of the student activity account. Um, and I went through the different possible options for P T O. Um, what most P T O and P T As are is a five oh one C three. Um, and that way that they can do fundraising, they're an official nonprofit. Um, but with that, they have to have a more organized board as well as they have to file, um, and fill out a lot of paperwork for that. Um, our legal counsel was willing to do that, but it'd be across, a cost of fifteen hundred, which is more than the P T O has. Um, so that wasn't an option that the parents really wanted to pursue, cause it, well, it just doesn't make sense logically. Um, the other option that I explored, I worked with the secretary of state in Helena's, um, departments. And they could become a registered business nonprofit with the state. Um, but they would not be tax exempt. So they would not be able to fundraise and have that tax exempt. Um, and I went through the, with the parents that came this time, what that paper would look like. Uh, but again, it would be them, um, you know, having a little bit more organized board, not as much as a five oh, uh, one C three. But, um, they'd have to open their own bank account and whatnot. Um, and the parents just felt like that really wasn't too viable of an option either. Um, they'd have to get more people coming and being on the board and whatnot. Uh, so what we decided at the meeting today is that, um, where we'd move, at least for the time being, and this could change if more people wanted to have a more formal P T O or whatnot, is the school district would run all fundraising and be in charge of the monies. Um, but we will have a parent committee still getting input and helping with the fun events and things like that. Um, the school district will just be handling any money and fundraising. Uh, and the parents, uh, can continue to come and meet with me and other staff at those meetings and we can brainstorm things, um, and keep having the fun activities just like they have in the past. The monies just run through the district. And that way we, um, will be good with what the recommendation for our legal counsel is. Um, so that's kind of where we left it for the P T O meeting. And we talked about upcoming events like having an A count in spring and a luncheon and things like that. That can continue and, um, they'll work with me to spend the money they do have. It'll, the purchasing will just go through the district. To the parents. Any questions on this?
So we'll, th- then if it goes through the, um, the school, then you could, the, right now they probably have to keep records of everything, right now they just turn that into you and we do that?
Um, so that's what's been happening in the past. So now all, if we do any fundraising or any monies, it will be just the district handling that. Uh, parents won't be handling any of the monies or fundraising, uh, which is recommendation of our legal counsel. Not to say that parents can't help with like fundraising and organizing, it's just the monies would be raised by the district. And that's what I have for the P T O report. Any questions on anything?
I think I asked them.
General purpose, vote input.
I had a couple things that I was wondering. Did anybody hear anything about not being able to get up that road? That it was, that it was supposed to, that there were people that have.
Comment only.
Oh, comment only?
No questions, no exceptions.
Could we talk about the road and then also, uh?
Well, let's go back to operations report on my report. Are you meaning our driveway?
Yeah, coming up the, up the driveway up there, has it, anybody been complaining about that?
We only had one mishap. I had a phone call away, came and take, took care of it.
Well, we was killed or?
No, so, so, I'll tell you about that. So we've contracted with a really good contractor for snow removal as well as de-icing. Um, they have, they've brought out two trucks at once and whatnot. Um, what happened that day was that, um, a vehicle was trying to go behind the bus and they were a little bit worried, they, they allowed too much space. They were trying to come in to pick up their kid and the bus was there and they were a little bit concerned about the bus maybe not seeing them, and they went too far over. Um, and they were, they were off the road in a park not plowed. And if you look out in the parking lot, it's kind of a, a steep.
Yeah.
Uh, hill there and they slid down that. So it really had nothing to do with snow removal or anything that. They went too far over, um, and they got stuck. But Jase came out with two trucks and two chains.
They called me right away.
But that really wasn't anything about it being too.
The road coming up, it hasn't been a problem.
Cause I will call them.
It's a dirt road in the middle of Montana, in the middle of winter. It's gonna get icy whether you de-ice it or not.
Yeah. Everybody at these stations, they're like, you're a little.
Yeah. And everybody that's been coming up here knows it. It's icy, they're gonna stop at the bottom.
So that, that was the only problem. But I've been working closely with the company to get snow removed.
All right.
All right. Back to your comment only.
I'll comment on it. Okay, um, I would like to comment on the, on videoing our meetings and, and that is something we would wanna consider to put on our resume.
Well, I video on that.
But, but I know that Danica is and I was wondering if we want, or if somebody else wanted to. And the reason I mentioned that was because of the, I did see that some of the, where the series one and two schools are.
The bigger schools have to.
Have to do that. And my question that I have in my mind, can I talk about that, Jase, is that, I, I'm still commenting. Is, is, um, would that, would we be able to get more people involved that way, was my, my thought process?
I think that's a good comment and maybe the board would like at the next meeting to.
Talk about it?
Talk about one.
Okay. It was a thought.
Cause that is happening with the bigger districts.
Yeah, I was wondering if that would be beneficial.
We can fit all the parents in this room. For each with each.
I know, we could. I'm just trying to think of ways to get them involved in the, okay, that's all.
Nothing further?
Nothing further.
All right. Nothing for additions? Old business. Trustee resolution calling for an election.
So this is, if you remember back in December, you guys passed a resolution. It might look vaguely familiar. Um, I've been playing around with next year's budget and we don't have all the final numbers yet. Today's count day for the second semester, there's still some sped numbers that we're waiting on. Hopefully in the next couple of weeks, O P I will have the final budget papers out. But, um, I did run a, I have a handy dandy little spreadsheet that I. Yeah, I already sent you most of it. Um, that I projected out next year's budget. And because we have gone down so much with enrollment, um, right here, a little highlighted, it's in the tiniest little print, uh, highlighted in yellow. That's what we're looking at for next year's budget roughly with the numbers I've got. Um, that's about forty thousand less than this year. Um, right off to the side here, um, is also that budget number in yellow. Um, the, the second one from the bottom where it says fifty-three thousand six oh eight ninety-eight, that's roughly how much we could consider levying. Um, what I'd like to do is have you guys read, have, have another motion to approve the resolution, including the levy language. Um, and then John and I can kind of pull together a bunch of scenarios for possibly asking for a general fund levy. I would not suggest going big. Um, go small. The nice thing is, is once a general fund levy is passed, it is permanently in the formula. You know, it, it, it's not just a one-year thing, it carries forth. So that benefit of say asking for fifteen or twenty thousand dollars will carry us forth.
So every year you get the fifteen or twenty thousand?
Well, it plays with the formula, it's a lot more complicated than that, but yeah, it does. It'll, it'll bump us up a little, a little chunk more, um, no, even if the, the numbers function rate a little bit.
It wouldn't have an end to it, so the levy would be something that would be.
It's permanently then part of the budget. So when I do the budget in August, um, I don't, you know, my handy little thing here. Um, so like right here, you've got the, the base. Um, and then where it says high five-year over base.
Yeah.
That's the levies that have been passed in the past. And that is added into the budget and then that becomes your budget without a vote. Uh, and so if we were to say do fifteen, to ask for fifteen thousand, and I'll have numbers and options and spreadsheets and all sorts of fun stuff for you guys to look at. Um, and a breakdown as to what it would be for a hundred, two hundred, four hundred, six hundred thousand dollar home and that sort of thing next time. And, um, but if we pass the resolution now, it's at least an option we can look at. If we don't pass it with that levy language, then we can't ask for a levy. Um, and maybe if you guys decide we don't, um, but at least this way it's on the table and something we can consider. And hopefully by the March meeting, we'll have final, the actual final numbers for next year. Um, if O P I's on top of your name, um, we'll have, we'll know what that amount actually is. I don't see it being hugely different from the number that I've calculated here. Um, but depending on what they put out for the sped numbers and stuff, it could, it could move it one way or another. Um, you know, a couple thousand maybe. Um, but what we're running on right now, and the reason it's not as horrible as a cookie, um, is we can go with the better of current year, um, A and B enrollment numbers or the three-year average. And because we had such a, a big year last year, that's what's carrying us forth and we all, you know, that's why we're down forty thousand dollars opposed to.
So if we're needing fifty-three thousand, six hundred and eight, then why would you only go for fifteen or twenty?
Are you gonna pass that? Are the voters gonna, are the voters gonna vote for it?
Voters wouldn't.
Yeah, you gotta think, you gotta think more.
Yeah, I was gonna, that's, that's exactly it. I mean, they're already seeing taxes bumped up.
Exactly.
That's why if you ask for those smaller numbers, you have a much better chance of it passing. And it's kind of like the, it's better to take little bites than to shove everything in your mouth at once kind of thing.
So where, where's the other, where's the other, where do you get the other money?
They won't.
Cut back, you'll have some other.
Yeah, yeah, and there's other, I mean, we've got other, we get that into this a little more, I think, next month. But there's, there's different ways of kind of making up the difference, shifting things around. But.
But you can't move things around and shift stuff now to where you didn't have to put in another levy?
Do you think they can come around with forty?
Forty thousand's a lot, yeah. I mean, that's, we cut teacher. I mean, that's kind of what that would mean if we were to.
Cutting a teacher really spares the school.
So I mean, there are other options, take little chunks away from that. That's why I'm saying you could technically go with a smaller amount, make a few other adjustments elsewhere and pull it off.
So what I'm in the process of now is reviewing everything, all expenditures. So I'm going through each item and looking at other possible cuts. So that we're not having to make staffing cuts. Even with that being said, forty grand is a lot. The other thing to think about is that all the S R funding, all that COVID money is expiring in September. We've spent almost all of ours, there's only a little bit left. But you're looking at every school district in a similar boat. If you're looking at the news and Missoulaian, M C P S has a decreasing enrollment just like us. They are also looking at a lot of staff paid for by COVID money. I mean, they're looking at potentially laying off eighty people with M C P S. And they're doing the same thing. They're going through each item and looking, well, where can other cuts be made? That isn't staffing necessarily, isn't going to as directly affect students. So that's what I'm in the process and Jessica and I are working on that. But like she said, I mean, we wanna be very careful asking taxpayers for additional money. We wanna make sure that we can exactly say this is what we are going to be using this money for and be very.
It's nice to be able to say we've made these adjustments over here, so we only have to ask for this much.
In my career, I've never asked for a full amount on a levy. I've always gone a little bit last. Try to be as fiscally as responsible as we can be. But we may need to ask for some money to be able to keep things status well and keep operations running the same as they have been. So today is just saying that it gives you guys the options to be able to run them.
So what happens if your student population comes up with some of those new changes? Will that, will that help that?
That would help that if, cause it's interesting looking through the numbers. Last year it was quite a bubble for what meant that being at fifty-five, I mean, thirty-five, forty is more average where we're at. I'd love to see us go up just a little bit for A and B. If we were up like at forty, that would help with that three-year average. But let's say we do get fifty-five next year. Then that presents a problem of like, oh my goodness, what if we had to hire a teacher and whatnot? And there is ways to petition OPI in extreme cases. But if we did have not much of a shortfall, that would help cushion things if we did get more students and more needs. So that, that could be the case there.
And next year's budget is pretty much set because it's based on this year's enrollment. So it's always. So really, the only thing I added, there's the little language, just a few sentences in. It just says approval of additional levies to operate, maintain the general fund for fiscal year twenty-five will also be requested. And if we decide not to, it's not a big deal, the election department, it's, it's all good. But this way we have the option if we decide to.
I'm good.
So make a motion. So make a motion to approve the trust resolution calling for an election using the levy language.
All is fair.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Policy thirty-one forty-one, out of district enrollment, first reading, discussion.
So you have a sample from a legal counsel for thirty-one forty-one. Last legislative session, they changed the law. And this is a big change for Montana, having more open enrollment. It's not as big a change for our district as some of the other districts. Some have been completely closed and would not allow any other students from out of district in. Just down the road, Lolo, for example, didn't allow any students from out of district to come in. And there was several districts that weren't allowing that. So now all districts are open. But there's a lot that goes into that, including that districts most will have a date that people need to apply to become from out of district in. They put a sample of June fifteenth in there. That's just a sample. You guys would need to decide if you wanna go with something else. Really, a lot of decisions is how open do we want to be? And loose with the paperwork and whatnot. There's a lot of factors that go into this. One of them is planning staffing. Districts that if they choose to be open all the time, well, what happens if you have an influx from September or October? And you need to look at adding teachers? Well, financially, that's gonna be a big problem. Space-wise, that's gonna be a big problem. You really need to know before then what your numbers are gonna be, at least a rough estimate. Also hiring teachers is quite difficult nowadays. Finding a teacher in September or even August can be very difficult to now. Another option is should a district be open midsemester, a year to allow students? This district, that once was in policy to allow that. But again, that presents some of those same challenges. So this is something to really think about. It's only the first reading today. But really kind of think where we wanna go with this. How do we want to establish this policy, which in turn will then move to the procedures that I developed to be able to get to people and get those procedures and packets and information out? The other part is that we are down a little bit. So unlike some districts that are overcrowding and don't have space, we do have some space. And that would actually help with A and B enrollment to have, you know, a few more kids. So there's a lot to go, a lot to go in there. You got some more?
I guess the, the one thing I wanted to say is, yeah, as much as like John said, the June fifteenth date is in there. Those moved to January thirty-first. They have already closed theirs for next year.
Our standard is June fifteenth.
What was that?
Ours is June fifteenth.
Yeah. Yeah, currently it is. And then there's a tuition portion of things. Parents no longer pay tuition, districts do. And so any of our kids that are in district that say go to Lolo, Lolo will send us a bill the following year, I believe that's how it's set up, for tuition. And of course, they don't make it an easy, it's gonna be this much per anything. It all depends on the, the school, the base budget, all that. So right now, with this year's numbers, any kiddos that are going to Lolo that are ours, we would pay a tuition of eleven hundred and thirty-one dollars and vice versa. Any Lolo kids that are coming here. And what that means is we need, we will be.
Is that yearly tuition or semester?
That's yearly, yeah. We'll be budgeting it in the tuition fund and it supplements the, the other school's general fund.
And you would charge them two hundred and fifty dollars?
Yeah, well, and it, it, well, and that's because Woodman's base budget, everything provides a smaller number. Other schools, they can go as high as, I think, I think I ran Sunset's numbers and theirs is like twenty-three hundred and something.
And some are really small. I've seen some under just a few hundred. It's all been figured out by the state.
Of all the schools that we currently have kiddos at or from, ours is the, the lowest, Woodman's is. And you go with the lowest of the two. So they get kind of lucky as far as like Lolo, theirs is seventeen hundred and eighty-three, but they would have to pay eleven thirty-one because our number's the lower number. And so that's gonna be, it's gonna tuition difficult over a couple of years.
So for these years, go down to the Lolo school.
Snack some kids.
That makes up for our levy and fund.
But not too many, I mean, we only got these three small buildings.
What's a good cap to cap off? Number of students?
Well, I mean.
Per grades, so that we have, or that's how we've done it.
That's what it's done in the past, yeah.
And, and you, we wanna continue that. We also wanna look at space-wise. That's why I have the fire marshal actually look at what can be done space-wise in each classroom. You wanna look at the numbers for each grade band. It looks different from kindergarten to middle school. There's a lot of factors in there. There's also factors included in this at looking at student records ahead of time, which is something we were already doing. But that is within the policy, looking at behavior records, attendance records, grades. Now, that doesn't apply when it comes to special education, the same way as general education though. Because that's a different federal law compared to state and that's within there as well. So there, there is a lot of factors within this policy. A lot to think on for the, the next final reading next.
Policy seven thousand eight tuition, first reading. I think we just discussed tuition right there. Let's go steal some kids.
That turned out. See if you can get their attendance and all that.
I was gonna say, the only other thing I wanted to say, I don't remember if I said this before, July fifteenth, is the, we need to have, the paperwork having gone back and forth between the schools.
That's a good point. If we don't have our numbers by July fifteenth, then that would affect funding.
So the June fifteenth cutoff.
I would almost suggest make a smidge, smidge earlier maybe? I mean, fifteenth worse, but we wanna make sure that, here's the other thing you gotta remember. It's a, it's a summertime date, how many people are working at the schools in summertime?
So you'd like to see like a, by our June meeting, maybe have some.
Have things ready to kind of rock and roll maybe? And that's, that's kind of the unfortunate part of the July fifteenth is how many people run around here?
So like the end of May date.
Yeah, to be discussed at the June, yeah.
To finalize maybe the, yeah, yeah, but yeah.
Moving on. Graduate profile accreditation, I said.
So I've got a little bit to show you here. I'll try to go fairly quickly because this is, I could go super deep into this. And I can answer questions, but I don't wanna take up your whole night with stuff that's a lot of work for us. So one of the other things that has changed is school accreditation. So it used to be in fall that the clerk and the administration would do some reports. And they would submit everything to OPI. And if there was any problems, they'd let us know, we'd fix it. And then they put out if we had accreditation or if there was deficiencies. So they have decided to change all of that. And now things are not due at one point, they're due all throughout the year, different parts. So this, they've increased the amount of workload for this and it looks a lot different. There used to be a program called Teams that everything was inputted into. Now, most of it's going through Infinite Campus, which we adopted fully this year, which helps. So they actually take our information and whatnot. Unfortunately, there's been a lot at the state level, technical issues. So some things still haven't even gone through and whatnot. But one of the things in addition is there's going to be other things that aren't in the computer that we're gonna have to do and submit. So I kind of wanted to show a quick glimpse of some of the stuff and the work that's gonna go into it. So this is a document that we're going to have to submit. And by we, I mean Jessica and me probably. There is a lot, a lot of things that have to be documented and shown evidence of. You can see in this Word document that there's a lot to there. And this is in addition to everything that they're already getting from Infinite Campus and the computer system. So these are all other questions that they either want evidence of or whatnot. So one of the things that they want is a C N A. So that is a needs assessment, comprehensive needs assessment. And that is a survey of stakeholders about information about the school, but also an analysis of testing scores. So not just state testing scores with Smarter Balance, but also our MAPS testing and all of that. Some of this looks similar to some of the stuff we did with Title One and going school-wide last year, but a little bit different. So what we're gonna do is I'm gonna make a survey. And I'll probably do it in Google Forms to make it easy for everyone. And that actually computes it too and whatnot. I'm not gonna use the OPI one because that is like dozens of page long and question after question. I mean, nobody wants to fill out a twelve-page survey. That just is, shouldn't expect people to do that. And that's what the OPI sample one is. So I'm gonna make a much smaller survey. There'll be one for the board, there'll be one for parents, there'll be one for staff, there'll be one for older students. But we're gonna make it a lot more brief. So that's part of that. Going through making goals. And again, that links directly to that analysis of test scores. It just goes through graduate profile. So this is an interesting thing that OPI has decided to be a part of it. It's not going to be due this year, but we need to discuss it and kind of start making some plans. And this is gonna go along with the strategic planning. Kind of a cool thing for like high schools and whatnot. But they really want to go through, what does it look like to be a graduate from our students? And I asked the question, well, isn't that for high school? And they're like, yes, but Kate, they're gonna do it too. So this is something that's starting next year that we'll do. And we'll talk about what graduates should know. Kind of vision statements. This, this goes along with strategic planning. What characteristics should a learner, a graduate from our school district have? There's an example from Kentucky that's kind of cool that goes through, they should be a critical thinker, an inspired innovator, global citizen, effective communicator, lifelong learner, responsible collaborator. I thought this was a fairly good example that goes through the different skills and qualities that a student should come away with from our district. So something that I just wanted to bring to your attention, this year we need to be discussing it. And then next year, we'll need to fully develop this. Lots of different things with that. They're going to be providing some additional training during summer. I'll get more information at the end of this month. There's a training, OPI is doing in Missoula, I'm gonna go to and whatnot. So there is a lot to the new accreditation process, a lot of back-end work. And some of it, you'll be. And some of it you'll be seeing with surveys, strategic planning, stuff like that. Any questions? More to come on that. This is.
It's not coming off the agenda anytime soon.
So this is just the, the very starting point.
Other roll enrollment.
Yeah, so this is linked to many other things that changed within the legislative session. So one of the things that they changed was that we had power as a district and a board to have exceptional circumstances to enroll four-year-olds in early kindergarten. The state has taken that away, particularly from you, to be honest. That is something that they've decided local boards can no longer do. Interesting. But the bottom line is they have made a new four-year-old program that is called an early literacy program. So the way that we can enroll four-year-olds now in our school and have a program is that we have to do an assessment and see if they have literacy needs. So if these students have literacy needs based upon that assessment, then we could look at enrolling them in a four-year-old program in our district. It will no longer be early kindergarten, it is not a preschool program, it is not a pre-K program. And I've asked OPI, what should it be called? And they, they say you need to call it a four-year-old literacy program. So if we want to continue to be able to look at having four-year-olds in the district, that is what we will need to do. We can't do a blanket enrollment approval by you guys anymore. I have been working with a few other districts in the county, and we actually have an early childhood committee that the county, some of us have been meeting with, and meeting with the University of Montana, the United Way, different organizations. And I've been working with Molly Blakely, who's the superintendent of Hellgate Elementary, and they're looking at running a four-year-old program. So her and I have been looking at assessments and whatnot, and we think we've found a good one that's really short. Because you really don't want to have a four-year-old sitting for hours. And it's also inexpensive for the district, so if we wanted to pursue that, we could and make that available to district and potentially out-of-district students. But it is with the caveat that they have literacy needs, it can't be a blanket enrollment under exceptional circumstances. So I wanted to make sure that you guys knew that and that we also can start sharing that with the public, so people know that it's a little bit more complicated.
So what are, what, could I ask some examples of literacy needs?
Yeah, and they're not as specific, the state didn't decide, okay, well, here's the one assessment you have to do, and they have to score below this. They didn't do that, the Board of Public Ed actually went through and found a whole bunch of assessments that they approved of. And then the district is deciding what that, that benchmark is and whatnot. But it could be a deficiency with phonological awareness, so with phonics. It could be with the alphabet, not knowing the ladders and whatnot. So it's all those early literacy things that go into that. But again, each assessment's a little bit different too. So they're not being so specific that they're saying that it's only kids that are below this benchmark. They're saying kids that have literacy needs based upon one of these assessments. The reason that they're doing this is they're actually getting federal funding through literacy dollars from the Department of Education. And that's how that money is filtering down from the federal government to the state government to local districts. So they no longer wanted that money to come from the kindergarten fund and whatnot.
So, so does the school get X amount of dollars per four-year-old then?
They get the same as a kindergarten, they will get that A and B money when it comes through the next year. So that is a way to help with A and B funding and enrollment, is potentially having a four-year-old.
How many four-year-old kinders do we have this year?
Five or six.
So if we decide not to do it, we could be down more kiddos.
And this just takes place in the pre-K deal that we have now.
Early kindergarten.
The early kindergarten.
Yeah.
Yeah, call it early kindergarten, they can give us money.
And then next, like, say, like, say we were doing that program this year, next year those kids would be going to kindergarten.
So those kids continue on.
Let's say.
Do we know if.
For my sake here, let's just call it preschool. They're going, four-year-olds are going to preschool and then they go to the kindergarten.
Do we know if we have a big need for that or, or some of the kids are.
We can't lose more kids.
Well, do we right now, do they have other siblings that are up and coming or?
Which is a great question, I mean, I only personally know of one family that for sure has a four-year-old. But there could be others that don't have siblings and whatnot.
It's hard to say at this point.
It's hard to say, I don't know that there's a huge group of in-district four-year-olds.
Now, can the out-of-district ones sign up for ours too?
Which could be a potential way to get more students if other districts around us don't have a four-year-old program, which several districts are not planning on doing this. So, some possibilities.
I don't know, Lolo's pretty full, are they, do you know if they have any kids?
Say, four-year-old and a.
They said probably not, but I don't think that's for sure.
Yeah.
And so our staffing as it stands right now would be able to deal with continuance of this, whether it's called, or what's called.
Preschool.
Unless there was a huge influx, I mean, things were similar. And there probably will be new policies coming out, like the legal council members are coming, because they'll have, law to strike the exceptional circumstances.
Now, do you get to pick the test?
We do.
And you change the test at any time. This one ain't working, we ain't getting the numbers.
That's a no.
Let's try number eighteen this time. Anything else, Mark?
That's all I have for now, but I will be bringing this up next month because the assessments have to be done in April. So there's a timeline that has to be followed for the Board of Public Ed.
So next month, do we just have to vote to approve this new program for you?
There may be a policy for you to approve, I'm waiting on clarification.
All right. Information, past upcoming events, pretty well covered it, and principals are important. All right, next meeting, March fourth, five P M. Thanks for coming, everybody. This meeting is adjourned at five fifty-five.